Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise and stand for Councilmember Pennington to lead in the prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the many blessings that you have entrusted in us. Guide us just now to do your will, help us to make the right decisions that is best for our community that we serve. We give you thanks for all our city employees, give them guidance, and keep them safe from harm. In all this, we pray in your most precious, holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, sorry for being a little late. We had a ninety-minute one back there, and it ran over ninety-two minutes. So we're running a little behind. So let's see here. Let's see here. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pennington? Councilmember Kraft? Councilmember Myers? Councilmember Davidson? Councilmember Brill? Councilmember Bessel? Councilmember Paulus?
Thank you. Just to mention, if anybody's out there, there's agendas back on both sides. So if you are new here, you're welcome to reach back there and grab an agenda. Alrighty. Any agenda modifications to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, where that stand is read? Alright. Is there any request for executive session?
No request. Thank you.
Really? Thank you. Alrighty. Special presentations, then. We have one. Are they here? Yep, there you go. I'm sorry, I had to look around real quick. Welcome. Microphone's yours. You got about whatever you need.
Oh, alright then. Thank you. Well, good evening. My name is Shawn. I'm a Butler County resident, and I'm here tonight to share an update on the Butler County Outer League Services Program, known as ESP. This program is funded by the taxpayers of Butler County, and it helps older adults in the county access basic services to help them remain independent at home. And it provides, it provides peace of mind for family and caregivers who need to work or tend to other responsibilities. In two thousand and twenty-four, ESP provided in-home supportive services for more than four thousand older adults, including four hundred and fifty-six of those in Fairfield alone. Tonight, I'm going to start by sharing a story from our most recent annual report, which I believe each one of you have. And there's some, I think we'll have back here for other members if they want to grab it. This is a story about Ann and Dawn. And Ann and Dawn are former spouses who remained friends and decided to move in together to save money on rent and to help look after each other. Ann is sixty-six, and she had to leave the workforce several years ago after she was diagnosed with COPD. Ann is tethered to an oxygen tank, which was not compatible with her job as a quality engineer. Dawn, who is eighty-eight, worked as a painter well into his seventies and also has COPD. Today, the two rely heavily on each other and help from the ESP to be able to remain independent. Through ESP's consumer-directed care option, they were able to find and hire their own home health aide, Tina. Tina helps with cleaning and laundry, and she also drives Ann and Dawn to medical appointments and to run errands. "We love, love, love her," Ann said of Tina. The couple also receives home-delivered meals and has received durable medical equipment to help them with safety concerns in their bathroom. Monica is the couple's ESP care manager. It is an important part of their team, according to Ann. Monica takes the time to sit and talk to me and understand what I need. When the landlord raised their rent on their apartment, Monica provided options for other housing in the area. Because, as Ann shared, when you're living on a fixed income, every bit of savings counts. ESP was created for people like Ann and Dawn, older adults who do the best they can on their own, but reach a point where they must get help or be forced to move into a nursing home. Most people who move to a nursing home eventually end up on Medicaid and taxpayers foot that bill. It costs about eight thousand a month for Medicaid care in a nursing home, compared to four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to provide in-home care through the elderly services program. This makes ESP both compassionate and cost-effective. Eligibility for the program begins at age sixty. The program serves people who need help with basic daily activities that you or I may take for granted, things like getting dressed, bathing, cooking, or getting to doctor's appointments. ESP is a community partnership. This program is run by council on aging via a contract with the Butler County Commissioners. This partnership includes local contracted services, service providers, who provide the oversight, care, and supportive services clients need. ESP clients have an important role to play in this partnership. Some clients, depending on their resource, resources, participate in cost-sharing, which helps the program stretch funding to serve more people. And finally, the taxpayers. Taxpayers and voters play an important role in this partnership. In fact, without their support, the program would not exist. More than eighty percent of the program's funding comes from Butler County Senior Services Tax Levy, which was first approved by voters in nineteen ninety-six. The most current senior services levy was renewed in two thousand and twenty by a record margin of seventy-seven percent. Considering the growth in our county's older adult population over the last two decades, it is remarkable that the levy has not had an increase in twenty years. Since that time, Butler County's older adult population has grown seventy-nine percent, and ESP is serving fifty percent more people. Despite this, care costs in the program have risen only eighteen percent. Today, more than one-third of Butler County households include someone aged sixty-plus, accounting for more than twenty percent of the county's population. And according to Scripps Gerontology Center at Miami University, more than twelve thousand Butler County older adults have at least one disability or form of dementia, which could make them eligible for ESP services. Chances are, you know someone who has benefited or who could benefit from ESP and the senior services levy. Despite strong fiscal management over the past twenty years, demand for ESP is now outpacing resources. For the past year, ESP has had to do manage enrollment, turning away hundreds of seniors who qualify for help. Family caregivers are stretched thin, and ESP is often the lifeline that keeps loved ones home and out of nursing facilities. The current tax levy that funds ESP will expire at the end of this year. In November, we're going to ask voters to approve a senior services levy that includes the renewal of the existing one-point-three-mill and an increase of point-seven. The proposed levy will cost homeowners fifty dollars for every one hundred thousand dollars of property value annually. The levy accounts for less than two percent of the average property tax bill, and that comes out to about four dollars per month to ensure these critical services continue and allow vulnerable seniors to remain in their homes. I know I've shared a lot of information. I hope you'll take a look at the program's annual report. It provides more information about who this program serves and its impact on our entire community. Everyone involved in the program is grateful for the strong support from the community. We appreciate your time, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. It is going to be issue one on, on the ballot in November, just to put that out there. If, also to note that if this does not pass, the program does cease to exist. So it isn't just, we don't get an increase in funding and we have to manage with what we have. The program will no longer be available for Butler County residents. Does anybody have any questions?
I know my, my parents, I'm sorry, my mother used the services when it was available before she passed away. Extremely great program, good people, highly suggest people taking advantage of it. We will promote that issue one all we can and wherever we can. It's much needed in our community. It's a quality of life thing. We got to take care of the elderly, that's for sure. So thank you for what you do. And if anybody up here wants to say anything or add anything to it or put it on your Facebook page, the knee part is, one-point-three is the renewal, so it's really a point-seven, if I remember right. So very small increase, and it keeps you guys going. You haven't had one in...
Twenty years. Well, we haven't had an increase in twenty-one years.
Yeah, an increase, renewal. Yeah, that's a key part right there.
Just wanted to make sure I got that right. Yes. Well, thank you again. We do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Alright, under citizens' comments, council reports. Gwen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday, November eighteenth, is discard day in Fairfield. And it's an annual event designed to provide residents with a convenient way to discard, recycle, or properly dispose of unwanted items, all in one location on one day. So there will be no donations being accepted at this event, and we do encourage people that want to donate all you can ahead of the event and only bring items for recycling and disposal. So here's what they'll take. They'll take e-waste, household appliances, prescription drugs, yard waste, scrap material, paper to be shredded, and bulk trash. They will not accept clothing, luggage, children's toys, household hazardous waste, paint, tires, or batteries. So please come out with your ID that you are a resident. That will be checked. And it's Saturday, October eighteenth, from nine to noon at the Fairfield Aquatic Center, two-six-oh-five Augusta Center. And I know I've taken advantage of this every year, so I hope that you guys go out, and it's a great, great event. So thank you.
And a reminder, this year it's residents only, because in the years past, we'd line up all the way down to Augusta and on to Reeser, but we expect to be much more controlled.
Yes, so they will be checking driver's license that you are a resident of Fairfield.
I, I just caught my fact, actually, citizens' comments I passed over. Is there anybody in here who would like to speak on anything? I saw you, sir, and I didn't know you, so I thought, oh, I just missed you. That wasn't intentional. Just state your name and address for the record, and then you're welcome to...
Jason Hudson, forty-three, oh-six, Whitmore Lane. I think probably, most of you probably know what I'm here to talk about, about the field at the bottom of Whitmore Estates. The maintenance of it. First off, I'd like to give a thanks to Assistant City Manager Adam. He's been very responsive. And Officer Sarah Finley, she was very helpful the morning that the incident happened with my dog. You know, field was overgrown. Where I found my dog was eight feet tall, because it was taken by a coyote. I chose not to live next to a wooded area. I'm concerned because they say that the property is only supposed to be cut twice per season. Well, there's four seasons in a year, correct? Well, that field hasn't been cut since springtime, be eight feet tall. Per property code, all grass is supposed to be cut below eight inches of Fairfield. But supposedly, there's administrative agreement that he only has to cut this twice per season. I'm asking, why does he get different treatment than me? Is this a written agreement or is it a handshake agreement?
That's a little different type of property, too. That's commercial. Yeah, where, there you go. Because it's a commercial residential, so it's a little different.
But the code says eight inches.
Mr. Kathman? So we have, we have, we, the city has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. We also have made some tweaks and amendments to it. That, in general, the properties need to be maintained and mowed to an eight, a maximum of eight inches of height. There are some large fields throughout the city, many of which are owned by the city. They're all over, hundreds, dozens of them at least, that we, they would be, it would be, we'd have to increase our staffing levels at the property maintenance division to enforce all of those regulations on all these large fields throughout the city and every ward and every area of the city. So what we do is we've, when those property owners come out of compliance, we say, will you mow it back ten to fifteen feet from the sidewalk so that the public walkways and the streets and things are mowed so people can walk and, and it looks less unsightly as you're driving by? And then we ask them to bush hog their fields, usually two to three times per the growing season, which is, you know, in April through October timeframe. The property at the end of history, that, that property owner didn't do the middle mowing this year. They, it has been mowed since the incident happened, the terribly unfortunate incident. But we have these, these fields all over, and that's been a common practice since before I was even employed by the city. So that's, that's pretty common for these large fields. Okay. And as council knows, we've had people in all wards and all parts of the city that unfortunately have had incidents with coyotes getting small pets. That's been a topic of discussion for many years, and I know we're all sympathetic in that, in this room on those issues, and it's, we've heard that in all, all parts of the city for, for some time now.
Yeah, you're not only with coyotes. We have them in our backyard almost every night.
I'm not asking to control coyotes. I know that's impossible.
Yeah.
But because that field was so overgrown, I couldn't see the coyote that came out and grabbed my dog.
Yeah.
I, I, that, that house is not by a wooded area. I don't live by a wooded area. And if you look at that field, that was poorly cut at the best.
So we'll just have to reach out to the landowner, make sure he does it the three times a year, three times a season. So basically, spring, summer, fall is typically what they...
So are they fined if they don't comply?
Well, we, yes, we, well, we don't, the, the property maintenance division does not fine anybody. We issue, we issue a violation notice. So if, generally, we know the large, a lot of the large property owners who have these large fields, we know who they are. We call them up, say, hey, it's time, get your guy out there, get it mowed and bush hog down. If they do not come into compliance, then we'll send them a violation letter. And if they receive the letter and still don't bring it into compliance, our next step would then be to issue a citation through the court system, and then they would be brought into municipal court if it's found, if they're still, don't bring the property into compliance.
So what is the status of this particular property? What has been done?
It was bush hogged two weeks ago or so, after the incident with the, with the, with the dog. It was bush hogged down. Wasn't the greatest example of workmanship, but it's not deemed to be in violation at this time. It was bush hogged down, and it's cut down.
But it was in violation previously?
Yes.
Right. So they were, the steps were followed with these folks then?
Well, after, after the incident, yes. They, they were mowing back fifteen or so feet, you know, around the property edge from Route Four and along the sidewalks of the neighborhood. The middle had gotten overgrown. And after the incident happened, and we were notified by the property owner through the city email address, we contacted the property owner, and they got it mowed within seven or ten days or so, I think, of the incident. Fourteen days.
So the requirement, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand. The requirement is that they have to have it mowed within fifteen feet of the public right of way, or they have to have the whole thing mowed?
So we have, we asked them to mow regularly back, you know, off the edge of the property. And then we asked them, generally, our process is ask them to bush hog it down three times per season. So once in the, early in the season, usually May, once in the midsummer, then once at the end of the season, typically October, to keep it through, you know, knocked down through the end of the year.
So were we doing our part to stay on top of these folks, I guess, is where I'm going with this?
We, there, our property maintenance folks issue over two thousand violations every year. That one was one that we probably could have been a little more on top of, that particular location. It was mowed back off of Route Four in the subdivision. It probably could have had a notice sooner about the interior being bush hogged down.
Yeah, I went out there a couple of days later, and you're right. Of course, the next time it gets bush hogged, it's going to be much better, because there's a lot of it's just been pushed over. But that'll be chewed up the next time it gets mowed, for sure. So that kind of thing happens on the second.
But so, my question is, is like, so I feel like this should be in writing for the citizens to know. Or, like, if you're going to make an ordinance that all grass is supposed to be cut eight inches or less, the ordinance, if you're going to make it for large property fields, it needs to be written in the ordinance.
Yeah.
That way, a citizen knows, because I'm out there looking like, you guys aren't on your job. Not, well...
It was never mowed at eight inches when you built your house here, or bought your house here. I know that.
Oh, yes, it was.
At eight inches?
Oh, yeah.
It's been there longer than your, your house has been there, so that property's been...
I was, I was in two thousand and four with JoJo.
Yep.
I think we ought to take in consideration also, if it's around houses, it should be...
And also, there's a, a fire hydrant at the end of Alec and Goodman right there that the fire department had to have public utilities come out and clear, that way they could maintain that fire hydrant. That's within about the fifteen feet of the edge of the street.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll stay with the property owner. I know it's been brought up to him a couple of times in the last few weeks. So Mr. Kathman's, that inspectors will reach out to him again, make sure maybe we can get that on a regular schedule. I don't think you'll have a problem with it, to be honest with you, but we just have done it three times.
Was there a property change, owner change on this property?
No, he's on the...
Because Mac just pulled up some great shots here dating from two thousand and fifteen. It looks like it was clear until about two thousand and nineteen, twenty, maybe around twenty-two. Clear, totally clear, twenty-two.
It's just going to need to be mowed more often and what to do with it.
Especially it being right there by the house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we didn't hear about this, or I didn't hear about it.
It was on, it was on September seventh. Yeah, that's, that's when it happened, early morning. He got taken into the field by the coyote. I searched for him all day. I couldn't find him. Then the next day, I went back out and I kept looking. I researched coyotes all night. Found out they take pretty straight paths. And from Route Four, I came up, and for some reason, he wanted to make noise for me. And I found him, and I took him over to Animal Care Center. He was still alive. You know, wonderful folks over there at Animal Care Center. I don't know if you guys have ever dealt with them, Dr. Dana, wonderful. He made it till the following Monday, and he passed away to his injuries. He was doing really well, then the weekend, he just took a bad turn. He was a Palmeran, you know, he was eighteen pounds. You know, he was a big Palmeran. He was seventeen and a half years old. You know, I've lived there since two thousand and four. We've been doing the same routine. You know, I knew, I know there's coyotes in Fairfield. I'm not asking you to take care of coyotes.
Yeah, yeah.
Was your dog on a leash?
No, it wasn't, because we've been doing the same thing for, for seventeen and a half years. In my yard. You know, I know to look around, but because, you know, like I said, where I found him, I had to, I called my wife, and I said, you got to come to my voice, because I don't know what he looks like. I wanted her to bring me the money. She couldn't see my hand in the field.
Hmm, yeah.
You know, he was in the interior of that field. But because he was blonde, he buried himself in the color of grass that he was.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And, and now that the field's cut, you know, citizens are using that to walk the Thorntons again. And, you know, I know you guys put sidewalks in, but that was a gateway for the kids to walk down the Thorntons and get their snacks and stuff like that, you know? But, you know, the other side, the other side of that, too, is, you know, there's a lot of activity, you know, that happens on Route Four right there. But if police pull someone over right there, they want to run that field, and it's overgrown.
Yeah.
Does that, does that create a danger for your officers if they run in there, and they can't see the suspect?
Yeah. We'll be on the, we, we've spoken to him, I know, a couple of times or three, plus he did it. So it'll be on the radar more now, so we'll get, make sure it gets, I, I know we can't do eight inches. I know he won't do eight inches. It make, we have too much land around the city to monitor eight inches, but it would be, it'll be cut, and we'll talk to him and get something done.
I just want to ask anybody else, you know, I want to protect, protect my property value of that also, you know? Someone, and my neighbors. I know my neighbors have complained about that field.
Alright. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to hear about that.
Mr. Davidson?
Come on. Yeah, I got some great information from Diana, our CFO for the city, on tax collection. And I look at it as, and correct me if I'm wrong, tax collection efficiency, some of the processes and so forth that, that you've employed. But on an individual tax collection basis, it's up forty-seven percent since two thousand and twenty-one. Businesses are up twenty-seven percent, and then the withholdings from companies on individuals is up sixteen percent. So great progress in this particular area, and there's sometimes complaints about processes and so forth. But in this case, I, I commend you guys for continuing to tweak the process and make it... I, I commend you guys for continuing to tweak the process and make it, make it compliant as well as, uh, with a customer service plan. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right.
Um, yes, I do, Mayor, I have one item that I'd like to give an update for Public Works. The comment period, Forest Sims Road closes this coming Friday. Please visit our website, www.simsroadrailoverpass.com to learn more about the project and to leave a comment. Responses to date have been pretty positive and as people look forward to this project becoming a reality. So Friday is, is the last date if you haven't done that yet. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of quick notes. Shelters five and six at Harbin have been removed to make way for new, larger shelters this fall. The tennis court at Harbin and the tennis court at Good Neighbors are scheduled to have surface color put down this week. Excuse me, the improved disc course is complete except for final signage, which will be designed now that the course is done. And Halloween on the Green is from six to eight P.M. on October 23rd in Village Green. I don't know if any of you have taken your kids or grandkids to that, but it is a wonderful event. Local businesses and organizations will be set up around the park with decorated booths to greet you with special treats and surprises. We have fifty-three booths that are signed up for this year's event. The very next night, you can join us for a movie at Village Green. It'll be Hocus Pocus and that starts at seven. And then as a reminder, if anyone wants to sign up for the seventh annual Parade of Lights, you have until November 7th. The application can be found on the city's website under Parks and Recreation, Programs and Events, then under Celebrate the Holidays. This year parade, this year's parade will be on November 22nd. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, can I go back to?
Yep.
So, so one of the items, I, I did request to Mr. Timmer that council gets another chance to look at this. This was passed, not by executive, uh, uh, execu- not executive, but emergency, excuse me. This was not passed through emergency, but through standard process last meeting. But I wanted to try to get Mr. Man to give a little bit of some background. We get a lot of information up here. A lot of times, it's very complex. And in this particular case, I'm gonna read this ordinance. This is from last meeting. This is ordinance number 110-25. It's an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with American Structure Point for the River, Grow and Chateau Improvement Project. And I wanted to generate discussion on this and get some background. There's a lot of information on this and in doing so, and that's my fault, there was a component of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Man, a component of it, we were going to put or considering putting a roundabout on River Road. Is that accurate or can you give us some background, council background on this? Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Myers, just as a point of reference, it was passed on September 8th.
So, too, too many.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, so Nick Deal was with me, our city engineer. All right, so I've got some, oh, this is a sad story.
Here it comes.
Have to do that. It hurts to have to do this, but there they are. So Nick and I prepared some slides here to talk about this intersection and the two trail projects that intersect at River Grow and Chateau. So this was identified in the connectivity plan for the River Road West Trail to meet the Great Miami River Trail at the intersection with River Grow and Chateau. There's a, that's a, there's a little background to why we're talking about this. That's, obviously, we've been talking about the connectivity plan for several years and focusing on it. So these two trails have been planned for years and this intersection has been, the, has been identified as where those two trails would cross.
Right.
Um, so multi, talking a little bit about multi-use trails. And our multi-use trail network that we're working on putting into place, we're trying to develop sense of place between the Pleasant Avenue Trail, the Great Miami River Trail, the River Road West Trail. We think this is gonna be a transformational project over the next several years to bring this network of trails to, to the city. We think trails are amenities that younger people and younger families are attracted to. And we want them to feel safe using them, so that's something we think about with the designs of all of our trails. Uh, this, this, um, sorry, but this, uh, has been, this intersection and these two trails are a little, even a little bit more of a focus with all of our emphasis that we're putting on Marsh Lake and the development of Marsh Lake and the attraction that we think that'll be.
Ben, currently, where we're talking about, there is a pedestrian light, correct?
Yes.
There is all, yeah, there's pedestrian light where you can.
There's what we call an RFB. It's a rapid rectangular flashing beacon.
I use it all the time. Yeah, you just press it and then it flashes and hopefully everybody stops.
Hopefully, hopefully. So it's a warning device. It is not a regulatory device, but there, there's something we like. We, as a tool we like to use, we've certainly got, well, it's having a, around the city, we've been using them a lot. Um, so, yeah, I'll talk a little bit about the, so the, the Great Miami River Trail, when we were working on, um, the Dog Park and, uh, when we were working on the Dog Park and the Roundabout at River and Gray, there was a lot of emphasis at that time and a lot of thought that we would extend the Marsh Lake Trail down to the Dog Park and eventually into Hamilton County. I think that'll still happen someday, I really do.
Yeah.
Um, we want Hamilton County and Metro Parks to do the heavy lift of bringing that up to us. Um, in the meantime, at, like I said, at that, at, in 2019, I would have said that that project was, was a little more imminent to bring the trail down to the Dog Park. Part of why the Dog Park was built was to be a trailhead on the Great Miami River Trail. Would be the, you know, the first place you'd come to as you come north. Obviously, then when you cross River Road into Marsh Park, you have another trailhead there and another waterworks. So with that being the thought, that was a lot of the reason why we chose a roundabout at River and Gray. I'll get into that just a little bit more. And then also, we purchased the property at River and Grow on the northwest corner.
Right.
Um, and put a little bit of trail on it, knowing that it would be a piece of the Great Miami River Trail. So all those were steps that we were taking. So then, um, briefing history, so this, this, uh, Roundabout at River Grow and Chateau, it's been in the CIP in one form or another since 2019. It's been in the CIP every year under that. But we've actually pushed it out a little bit as we started to move some other projects forward. It made sense to us to, once Nick wrote the grant application and was working on grant applications for the Great Miami River Trail, Pleasant Avenue Trail and was also, you know, had, we've been working at advancing the River Road West Trail. Once, once we started focusing on those trails and the interior trails at Marsh, which will be coming in 2026, um, once we started working on that, um, we thought it made sense to get those started in place and to hold off on this project a little bit longer. So this project got pushed out a little bit for some other priorities, but it had always been, at least my thought and my, and I've said it anytime we had a briefing, that the Great Miami River Trail, you know, it's gonna connect eventually from Pickwa all the way to the Ohio River someday. That, um, but it's gonna be from Fairfield to, certainly from Fairfield, um, to, to Renshler as soon as, as soon as we extend it, while it already connects to Renshler. Um, but that section of trail, uh, and then where it goes through Kettering and all the way north, um, I've been on a lot of, a lot of that trail. And the busiest road that it will cross anywhere will be River Road. So because we're gonna cross it twice, um, that was part of the thought for the Roundabout at River and Gray, so that you would cross it as a place where traffic was slower, traffic was calmer, designated, designated crossing and that you would book in that with a crossing, um, at River Grow and Chateau. So that always made sense to me. And this, you, oops. Uh, so now this was, you know, we talked about it in our Fairfield Connects briefing. We talked about it with the, um, the two grant projects when I did a briefing. Uh, this, this picture was included in the briefing that I just did. That was pretty long for the five years of Fairfield Connects. That was one of, one of the many, many, many slides in that briefing that went on for a while, but that was part of it. Um, so just a little bit about, you know, there's multiple reasons why you might build a roundabout. Um, certainly, traffic safety is the one that everybody points to, accident reduction. You know, no, nobody hitting you in the, you know, no left turning accidents. Um, so that's, um, accident severity is the first thing that people talk about when they talk about roundabouts. But there's other reasons I highlighted here, that they're efficient way to move people. They're an efficient way to calm traffic and to avoid queuing. There's lots of stuff on that. People in their own ways, new clever to me. So like I said, I talked about why we did those projects. Um, the, the Gray Road Roundabout, I alluded to a little bit. Uh, a lot of the reason why we did that was future pedestrian safety for crossing Gray Road at River. Uh, there weren't a lot of accidents there in the existing conditions. Um, there was speeding there, so the traffic calming element i- is, is a reason. And if you'll remember, when people came to council, uh, a few years ago for the river complaining about all the serious accidents on River Road south of this intersection, you know, we got some points with them for having made some attempts to calm traffic and slow traffic. They said, well, the roundabout slows traffic there, but it doesn't help us down the river bend and, and across some Cincinnati Water Works. Um, so we did some other things there, rumble strips and signs and things that, but, but at the time, the residents did appreciate the efforts we had made to that point of putting in this intersection. Just, we don't have a lot of roundabouts. Uh, the other one, Seward and Tylersville, recently completed. So that one wasn't, wasn't accident driven. This was more capacity driven. So when we were improve, needed to improve this intersection for the development, development-driven improvement, um, they were gonna have to re, rebuild the signal, add turn lanes, and a roundabout was a way of increasing that capacity and then also providing for future pedestrian safety. And existing pedestrian safety, it was something we heard at the public meeting with the residents there that they wanted to cross to UDF to get their ice cream. Um, so we did put the roundabout and an RFB that you alluded to with the flashing warning.
Are they using that now? Do you know the frequency?
Uh, I don't know the frequency that they're pushing the button to use that RFB. I can't say, I mean, I go home.
I've never seen a pedestrian cross a roundabout. And I haven't studied it, but I just have.
Sure, they, oh, absolutely. So absolutely, they, they, they cross, well, yeah, Steve might, Steve might see it more often than me.
Yeah, you, yeah, you live right there.
Pedestrians in that regularly going to UDF. I, I noticed how many pedestrians there were across there whenever we were constructing it. That's when we noticed, one of the pedestrians, because we're out there every day. Kind of like when we build sidewalks, we notice how many people are there before we finish the sidewalk. But, yeah. You only have to look one way. I mean, that's a real thing. You only have to look one way and you only have to cross, you know, you're crossing to a refuge. So if you look at that picture, you're only crossing to the refuge in the center. So, you know, roundabouts are safer for pedestrians crossing.
What about where you're going to be putting it, Ben? With all the gravel trucks that come through that corridor, there's a ton.
So then, so, yeah, that's part of why, I mean, this intersection.
Gets a lot of trucks.
Gets a lot of trucks.
Gets a ton of them.
It gets a lot of trucks.
But you've looked at that in this particular.
So we'll make sure that, you know, trucks can make those turning movements. We had to make sure that trucks, this one's actually a little harder for trucks as far as we had to make sure that they can make the turning movement of, of turning 270 degrees, that they wanna go north and then go to the bypass. At, uh, at River Grow and Chateau, we'll make sure that they can make those turns, but most of them are just going straight across so they can utilize the truck apron to do that without, um, without probably ha- having to make it very complicated. Like I said, we, we can maneuver this with fifty-three foot trailers, um, making 270 degree turns. Certainly, at River Grow and Chateau, that'll be simpler than this.
Yeah, that was that land that, right here in front, in the forefront of this picture, when that company is now building a big building.
That's where that great big building is going and that, that's, and you were supposed to talk about this a lot. I started talking over, over where, as I'm, as, as, per normal, I started talking longer than I should have. But, um, I wanted Nick to talk about these and give you, I wanted to give you the history of, you know, what, what I was thinking as city engineer, Nick's city engineer now, and what he's thinking now. But one of the things here that I'll point out is on this corner closest to us, where they're building that building, there's gonna be a multi-use trail there that will eventually extend down to the Miami to Miami. And so you're gonna have more pedestrians cross that intersection and Nick could recommend that they, they add flashing beacons there too. So we really wanna make people safe when they're crossing the road with bikes and pedestrians, pedestrians, people walking dogs, people pushing shoulders, all that, all those things that you get when you're attracting people to a multi-use trail. These are our most vulnerable users that are gonna be using a multi-use trail. And, and we don't, and we want it to be, uh, you know, we don't, we want it to be safe so that it does actually attract people. If not, if people don't feel safe, they're not gonna actually use it. I'll, uh, I'll stop talking for a minute and let Nick talk about the rest of them.
So, uh, looking to the future, we have the Ross and Woodridge Roundabout that, uh, this, this came about due to a, a safety study that we commissioned after years and years of accidents. You know, this is a, our highest, most unsafe, highest accident rate, most unsafe intersection that does not have a traffic signal. And so we commissioned that safety study, uh, you know, explored a range of options and including a traffic signal. Um, this intersection, due to the crash history, did warrant a crack, a, a traffic signal. But ultimately, because this was a, you know, we're looking at this as a safety improvement, we wanted to put the safest possible intersection in there. And, uh, we've advanced the, uh, the roundabout design to the point that we're requiring right away right now.
And have funding.
And have, four hundred thousand dollars worth of funding.
And if you remember, we actually had people come to council and complain about.
Right, I remember this.
So it was, again, different, different driver.
If you, uh, look around Butler County, uh, you'll see lots of roundabouts. And that's, uh, due to the versatility, honestly, uh, they can, you know, improve capacity, reduce delay. They can address past safety issues and they can, uh, uh, improve, uh, traffic calming and, and improve safety through traffic calming, I guess is probably the way to phrase that. And, uh, you know, whenever we are exploring the possibility of a roundabout, we, we speak with a traffic engineer at Butler County who is kind of regionally a bit of an expert in roundabouts. And, uh, so we, we've talked to him about this, uh, several times over the years. Um, but he, you know, he thinks that the River Grow-Chateau intersection would benefit from a roundabout.
And it will be safe for bikers?
It will be, it will be the safest thing that we can do.
Far safer than it is today?
Yeah. Far safer than it is today. It'll be far safer crossing than it is today.
And so, uh, kinda wrapping things up, uh, by bringing the two trails together at the River Grow-Chateau intersection, we're, you know, making a substantial, uh, change to the intersection by enticing, uh, bringing all these vulnerable users to cross River Road at that spot. And we, uh, you know, our goal here is, is to give them the safest possible crossing. And, uh, you know, a roundabout for the purposes of calming traffic will reduce speeds from forty, forty-five miles an hour down to twenty-five miles an hour. And, uh, they'll give everyone just a few more seconds to make the decisions there.
Well, and you just heard it in Chief Mayor's presentation.
Yeah.
You know, that we work with them whenever we can. You know, a lot of times when people have speeding complaints, they're not.
Ben, council just approved, I think it was 279,000 for, that's the engineering on this, correct?
Yes, it also includes the engineering on the River Road West Trail all the way to.
So you added that in there?
All the way to West, so that's part of it and that's a big driver.
What's the price tag of this? What do you think?
Uh, we know because we're, if you apply for that, is that this round?
No.
Next round.
It'll be next round. We, we don't, we don't.
We don't know. That's part of the engineering process.
We, we don't have any design completed yet.
So we, we haven't done a full estimate, but it will include the River Road West Trail and improvements to the service drive as part of it. So typically, uh, the roundabout we just did at Seward and Tylersville, uh, was 1.5. 1.5, which, uh, the county tells you to, whenever they do them, we're able to, we're able to do them. Somehow, we, we were able to come in under what. We, we were able to come in under what they usually get.
What was John Gray?
Oh, back then it was 700,000, we had a $400,000 grant, something like that. And that one had a pretty, we'll, we'll do the, we'll do the decker's lighting and we'll light it up. One John Gray in River, uh, we took some criticism at the time that it was a little over landscaped, maybe a little overdone. Um, the thought process at that time was that it would be a bit of a gateway to March Park and that was the reason for it.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be our intent. Well, this slide back that shows, well, what Seward and Tyler'sville look like, I would envision it looks a little something like that. We did sign, we did a little bit of decorative rock. Um, but, you know, I don't irrigate it or make it, uh, I don't think it has to be all that over landscaped like we have. That's our presentation.
You answered my questions. I don't know if council has any additional, but.
No, I believe we've thrown on this a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, we did. The, um, I always worry about roundabouts though. Well, you know, the, the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, uh, put out a report recently because all the mayors discuss roundabouts and it's a big thing. It seems that they don't really reduce crashes, it reduces fatalities to zero. You know, there's fender benders now instead of.
I would argue probably reduce that or something.
Yeah, the fatalities and the major accidents go to zero.
And what, what you find with roundabouts, people apply them beforehand and then afterwards, yeah. If they tend to. If they're not familiar, um, you know, that unfamiliarity for each of them sometimes, so.
Well, thank you for the more in-depth report on that. Thank you, thank you. All right. Next is the, uh.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I have a moment to speak?
Yes, uh, let's see.
On this topic?
Okay, you're more than welcome. For those that don't know, this is Dave Butch, our former public works director.
Hey, second from what I was going to say. Um, again, my name's Dave Butch. I live at 1834 Park Place and, um, I was the public works director for 12 years here and I had 38 years in public works. I appreciate you having Ben come in and kind of explain the roundabout and everything. Um, roundabouts do have their places, they do. Five Point up in Hamilton, excellent choice. Liberty Fairfield and Hamilton Mason, great, great location. Um, this location, I have concerns and a number of concerns. Um, the construct, this, the objective, he pointed out pretty much the objective of this, so I'm going to have to skip through a few questions that I have because Ben's already answered them, twin him and Nick. Um, the main objective here is to make a safe crossing primarily for the pedestrians on the future bike path and multi-use path, correct?
And slow down traffic, it's a calming device.
Was there a study done to determine this is the best option for this location? Or is this something that internally it was decided? Like Ben said, I know it was on there. I was here and I did the budget back then and I know why it was in the budget and I know why the other one was in the budget and, and built, the other gray and river roundabout. Um, so I take it if there was an additional study done on that?
So to answer that question, I mean, are, there was not an official study where we had to hire a consultant, what we did, Nick said that, um, Matt Lefler, Butler County Engineers Office, he said he was a bit of an expert, I would say he's an absolute, uh, roundabout expert, so we met with him multiple times.
Yeah, I'm not going to disagree with you on, on his expertise.
That, that, that was what we did in lieu of doing a formal traffic study with a consultant was we, we met with Matt and we were confident in our assessment after meeting with Matt.
So were there any other alternate, alternative, uh, options here considered other than a roundabout? I, I, I don't know who to direct it to, if I direct it to Ben at these ques- some of these questions, or is it okay if I do?
Sure. He'll respond.
So, yeah, we, obviously we've got an, a, a R F B right now. Um, we talked about a hawk signal a little bit, which, um, when you talk about unfamiliarity, there's even less familiarity with a hawk signal. Um, and then the other option, you know, as far as a traffic signal, this, this had been studied, um, for traffic signal warrants and has never met warrants in its existing configuration.
Good, that was another question I had, does it need a warrant? And I would have assumed it didn't at this place, location. Um, a hawk si- a hawk signal, I think would be a better option. Um, Tim mentioned the truck concern and that, and that's it. I'll give you an idea. I sat down there at the intersection last Thursday for 65 minutes and this is what I saw. This is what I counted at 10:10 to 11:15 a.m. So typical mid morning. I would have loved to get down there a little bit earlier, I should have, because when the trucks go down to the plant in the morning, they line up and then they start coming out as soon as they get filled, the first runs. So I got kind of ones, a lot of ones returning back to the, to the gravel plant. Um, counted 32 dump trucks and I'm, I'm, and two thirds of those were semi dump trucks, okay? Uh, and I excluded all city trucks, all city dump trucks. I didn't even count them in it. Six concrete trucks, three tanker semi trucks. Okay, that's 41 trucks in 65 minutes. That's one every 90 seconds. And what you're going to have here is these trucks, I mean, they roll back and forth and they run smoothly right now. You're going to slow every single one of them down 24 hours a day, seven days a week through that intersection. And the noise that you're going to have when they're braking, slowing down, they may not have to stop, but they're going to have to slow down considerably or stop depending on who's moving through the intersection. I didn't observe one pedestrian, which is middle of the week, not an event's going on at, at the, uh, at the parks or something like that, so that didn't surprise me. Um, the cost, again, men, Ben mentioned kind of the cost and looking at what's in the CIP and everything, roughly construction about 2.6 million, or sorry, I'm sorry, 2.3, 2.6 total with the ride away. This, this area down here is unusual in that is there 150 foot ride away, very unusual. Be an excellent place for roundabout if we needed it at this location. Um, there, there is a, a belief too and some comments that, um, well, let me, let me go back a second. Number of accidents in the last three years, uh, there were five accidents. Um, one of them ran a stop sign on Grove, Grove Lane, one clipped a car parked on Chateau or stopped on Chateau as they made the turn. There was only two of them that actually were movements within the intersection in three years. Accidents, I don't think were an issue at that location and Ben didn't bring that up, so, um, I just wanted to point that out also. Um, there is a, there is a belief that the roundabouts over the long term are cost effective for, for maintenance and stuff. Uh, it might have been electrical, might have been 30 years ago before LED lights, electronic components and everything. Electrical bills for usage on intersections were a lot higher. Today, they're a lot less. I think I budgeted $60,000 for electric and I think we have 60, I think 68 signals or 65 or 68, something like that. Please?
We have 61.
Oh, 60?
Now we have 61.
Okay, oh, correct me, okay, 60. Our budget is $60,000 for 60, roughly 60 signals. Um, so the LED, that, that is, and then the maintenance for all the special concrete, if it's stamped or whatever, curbing and all that, general intersections don't have that. Striping, mainly that's about it. Um, the, uh, a traffic signal and Ben mentioned the hawk signal and that's, that's one thing I want to point out, it's probably roughly 20, it's, the roundabout is roughly 20 times the cost of a hawk signal going in. That would be the next step. Now, there is hawk, there is a hawk system close by here. It's on, um, up at Flubs in Hamilton, on Eaton Road.
Yeah.
Right there, it's at the Beltway, um, there's a path they're putting in, the Belt Lake, um, Belt Line, I think it's called the old train track. They put one in there. It's four lanes, 35 mile an hour, lot of cars. That's a system that they have in place there.
Nobody's asked, what is a hawk system?
Well.
I did have to look it up.
Okay. I do have, uh, this, this was an article in, by, um, in the, in the newspaper, the, the journal on the hawk system there at Eaton. It's in there, if you, if you look it up, they will talk about it. Went in and, this was articles from 21.
H A, H A W K?
H A W K. It's also called, uh, uh, let's see, besides a hawk, because I found, they're all, they're all over the place.
Nick, what's a hawk system?
What's it stand for?
What, what is it?
It's three lights, a, two red lights at the top, a yellow light underneath it, and it goes through a series of, uh, when someone clicks the button across, uh, the, uh, we, uh, the yellow light starts flashing, followed by a wag on the red, full stop, which requires two stops. We're going to give it back to the wag and the flashing yellow as it, as the pedestrian clears the intersection.
Okay.
Do we have, do we have the ability to, um, run a short little video by ODOT?
Actually, we, we can all look at this and this isn't decided on tonight, so we can look it up.
I mean, I have, I have the video. I have the video from ODOT on one of their signals that they put in.
We got, we got a lot of stuff. I think our council's key, are you guys want to just look it up on your own and then, and we can get back to Ben on it?
Well, there's one, one more thing I want to touch on that.
Not to cut you short, but.
What, what I tried, I didn't really want to come here. I didn't really want to have to do this, but I wanted to make sure this is the direction council wants to go before you begin spending over a quarter million dollars on engineering something that may not be the best option for this location at this time. Not saying you couldn't put a hawk system in and say, you know what, this isn't the way we want to go. We want to put the roundabout in. So you spent $125,000 and you decide to spend 2.6 million. Fine, go ahead. I mean, I, I'd rather throw this money that direction and try it. If it doesn't work, that's what I would recommend. The second, this, the, I'll go with maybe my final thing here. The, um, part of the North Hamilton, I think Crossing Project, they call it, or Development Project with all the roadway work that they're doing, um, they're getting ready to put in a couple of roundabouts. One is at North Washington Boulevard and Elkton Road, right there where the freshman high school is, and also North B Street, a, a, a roundabout, a companion roundabout just south of there. The reason I'm bringing this roundabout up is that at that, at the school, across the street, as part of this project, they're putting in a multi-use path, okay? They're putting in a hawk system at the drive for the school, 500 feet away from a roundabout. Now, if roundabouts were the best option to cross that, why are they wasting their money putting a hawk system in 500 feet from the intersection?
You know, as someone that grew up in that neighborhood, I would say it's because everybody is walking back the other way, so they're saving them the 500 yard up and then back around. No one's really walking in that direction. If you're leaving the freshman school, you're going to be walking back towards, uh, the Random Hills neighborhood. You're not going to be, there's, you know, there's not a significant amount of residential down along West Elkton and nobody's walking to New Miami as that would be a different school district.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to go back to Sanders or wherever it is.
Well, what, what you could do, what they could do then is put the, uh, path on the school side, on the school side.
There's already sidewalk on that side there.
Oh, so therefore you can't change it to a path?
My, my guess is they're doing the multi-use path around the school and connecting it to the already existing sidewalk. I, I, you know, I don't, I'm not 100% familiar with that project, but there's already sidewalk. There is some new neighborhoods being developed right there, but at the Alexander Neighborhood sidewalk already exists.
Well, if you care to look it up, it's a very interesting plan, um, as far as that goes. So, but, you know, as was pointed out, this was in the works long before. I don't believe that there was any consideration for any really other options at this location. Um, as part of what was written in the original council letter and back in 2019, that the roundabout would serve as a focal point for the area. Now, I'm all about gateway features and things like that and, and beautification and all that. I think that's fine, as long as you're not disrupting the flow of traffic. And at this thing, I think it's a disruption of the flow of traffic. You want to spend a million dollars on beautifying the area, fine, you won't have me here. But if you're going to slow this traffic down and, and do this, I lived, I lived near that intersection of River and Grove, okay? Drove that area all the time. I don't see the concerns that were brought up then and to this day. That was a roundabout that was chosen to be installed regardless of, of, uh, of needing, needing it or not.
Okay.
So, um, alls I want you to hear at this point is that there are other options. I think they need to be considered before you expend this, this amount of money and do this amount of work.
Okay. I think you've presented well.
I, I appreciate you giving me the time.
Yeah.
To say it.
We got staff and we got staff here and all of us, I think you've, uh, shined a light on it, so we'll look at it and see, and beat it up and see what we can do. Maybe it'll change, maybe it won't, but, um.
Well, then the other.
Appreciate you.
The other thing is, is that there are options. Um, and with the, the Sims Road project, they had, uh, we have input and one of them was a no build option. Um, I think we skipped past the residents on this point. Uh, the ones that are going to be affected, especially the ones along the Service Road of River Road on both sides, uh, down through there, I think they ought to know what, what's coming. Um, and that, I think we should, there, there is not a rush to get this in. Take a step back, let's make sure that this is the direction you want to go. So, all righty?
Well, well taken.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Here.
Commissioner Hasler?
Here.
Commissioner Alewski?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
All property owners and citizens of Fairfield, Ohio are hereby notified that a joint public hearing between the planning commission and city council has been scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 at 7 o'clock PM at the Fairfield Municipal Building, 5350 Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio 45014. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding modifications to chapters 1130 zoning regulations, 1131 use regulations, 1132 planned unit developments and overlay districts, 1150 dimensional and design standards, 1151 parking and loading, 1152 landscaping and buffering, 1153 fences, hedges and walls, 1155 signage, 1170 administration and procedures, and 1171 definitions of the planning and zoning code as part of the Fairfield codified ordinances. Parties that wish to review the proposed changes may do so by visiting the Development Services Department located at the Fairfield Municipal Building. Questions may be directed to the department by telephone at 513-867-5345 or via email at development@fairfield-city.org. The department is open Monday through Friday between the hours of 8 o'clock AM and 5 o'clock PM.
Good evening. So, given the time, and I know you've been here since 5:30, I'm, I'm going to give an abridged version of this, but before I, um, say, move on, um, know that, um, this will be discussed in extreme detail with our planning commission. Adam, get the full, full scoop of it next week. Um, so we will be looking at it in detail, um, tonight, like I said, I'm just going to give you an abridged version. Um, so as you know, the zoning code, um, it's our primary tool, um, to guide development, um, um, in the city, um, you know, it sets standards of how land can be developed and used. Um, why are we proposing the changes to the zoning code when we just updated it about 18 months ago? Well, um, when we did a major overhaul, so this was a two-year project, um, it wasn't just a couple minor updates, it was a major overhaul. So when you do that, you're kind of changing some new language, some new, um, new uses, new layouts, new formatting. Um, so during this 18 months that it's been in effect, we've had some time as staff to look at it and to, um, to determine if we made any, uh, any, any errors that we might have made or any omissions, um, as well as assessing the effectiveness of these new regulations. Um, so after doing that, um, we decided that, um, we needed to make a few changes, a few modifications, some clarifications, and we actually added some new topics, um, new uses to this. Um, just to, real quick, some of the topics that. Um, just to, real quick, some of the topics that we have added or some of the new uses that we added. Data Centers is one that we added. Um, this is a, um, very, um, popular, um, use that's being, um, really popular in the Midwest, um, due to the advancing of the digital age, you know, and/or so we can play online gaming and streaming and cloud sharing. That these are popping up everywhere. Um, a lot of jurisdictions are either actually prohibiting these in their jurisdictions, or they are limiting them where they can go. Um, they are a necessary use, but they, um, do offer little to no value in our communities. Um, so we are just kind of, um, regulating where we think they should go, um, in our city. Um, due to that, um, it's an industrial use and we have little land left, um, and we need to be strategic on where we locate things and what we locate. Um, another one is a cross-dock warehouse. Um, the picture that you see there in the bottom left, or just, no, just the bottom, is the, um, Hit Promotions. Um, that is a, um, two-hundred, um, no, an eight-hundred-thousand square foot, um, cross-dock. So, you know, there's loading docks on both sides of the building. Um, these buildings are typically for logistics and distribution facilities. Um, they generally range from anywhere from three-hundred thousand to a million square feet. So a million square feet's about twenty-three acres, which is about a small subdivision, so they're very large. Um, currently, we only have one zoning classification for warehouses. It's a catch-all for no matter how big or how small it is. So, we are, um, proposing to pull this out of the warehouse's definition and create its own and have its own, um, permitted in, um, in the M-two district, um, just because of the nature of, of this, these types of buildings. And, and they, distribution facilities tend to have, um, it's not your manufacturing or you have the higher paying jobs. Um, again, real quick, another use that we are coming up with, um, recommending is a drive-through convenience store. Uh, we all know what these are. Um, we're creating a new use for this because our zoning code allows retail and a convenience store is a retail, but drive-through use is an accessory use. So we have this use here that we're not quite sure, is it an accessory? Or is it a, is it a, is it a, um, is it a primary, which is a convenience store? So we are just creating a new, um, a new use for this, and then we're regulating it, um, just like we do, um, accessory drive-through. Drive-throughs, accessory drive-throughs are what you see at McDonald's. McDonald's restaurant is the primary use, the accessory is the drive-through. So we're just permitting them, recommending them to be permitted with conditional use and with sta, um, permitted with standards in certain zoning districts that align, um, or that parallel what the, um, existing accessory drive-through definition calls for. Um, again, real quick, um, D-one, um, this is our town center area. Um, we are actually proposing to remove gas stations altogether as a permitted use in the D-one. Um, they were permitted at one time, then after the Kroger gas station, they became conditional uses. And now we feel that they really no longer serve the purpose of our downtown. You know, we have a vision of our downtown of how we want to, um, develop it. You know, we had the town center placemaking strategy. Um, we're trying to create a central gathering place for our downtown where you see traditional downtown uses like restaurants, entertainment, um, retail and, and local businesses, and these gas stations really typically don't fall under that vision. And we've got five gas stations already. They can continue to operate and, you know, not all of them look like very visually appealing. So we think this is, um, something that, um, there's plenty of, plenty of them already in the downtown, and there's plenty of other opportunities for them to locate in the city. Um, and then the next one, the last one that I was gonna talk into detail about, but I'll just go over quickly, is that, um, we have a requirement about parking of commercial vehicles in our residential areas. Um, you can only park them there for up to four hours. We're just really, um, adding, um, the word construction vehicles and equipment. Um, we assumed that, you know, most people would consider that construction vehicles and equipment will fall under commercial vehicles because it's a commercial, it's not a residential, you know, vehicle, it's for business. But we've had some difficulties with people we've had to give zoning violations to. Um, these are bottom two pictures. We've actually had people have these in their yards and claim that they were their personal use. So we are just trying to clarify some language, put the words "construction vehicles" in there, and trying to make our zoning inspectors' lives a little more easier when they have to give out these violations.
Aaron, before you move on, it used to be the, it wasn't commercial, it was, uh, like two-ton or something.
It was parking of commercial vehicles, and in the little definition or the little regulation for it, we mentioned the tonnage. We took the tonnage out because nobody knows what that is. Like, I don't even know what a two-ton is. So in the little description of it in our zoning code, we kind of list out, you know, what these vehicles are. And it's very, you know, we, we, we are very, probably like twelve different examples in there, and then we use the catch-all or similar. You know, so we call it like box trucks, trucks, semis, buses, limos, all the typical stuff that you see for a commercial business.
But a guy driving a car with Orkin on the side door, he's allowed to park in his driveway because he works for Orkin.
Absolutely. It's not, right, absolutely. But if someone that has a Bobcat in their backyard, you don't own that as a personal, you use it for a business. It's not your own personal, um, gonna ride it around in the backyard with, cause I feel like it, you know.
Hey, Aaron, do we have any, um, I guess zoning restrictions? And I, I've just noticed that some of the streets now have so many cars on them that I could imagine, you know, Tom Lake Camp's team of fire, uh, fire trucks and rescue, sometimes difficult getting down those streets because there's so many cars on both sides. Are there restrictions on any of that?
Um, now, I'm gonna actually have to defer that to Ben Mann, but, because he deals with the public streets. But what I will say is that, um, Public Works does post the streets. I'm not sure if it's consistently across the city, if it says it's no parking on that side of the street, you're not allowed to park. If they have parking permit, if there's no sign on the other side, then it's permitted. I'm assuming we do have some streets where you can park on both sides. I, I don't know how it is in the city, which is why Ben might be able to better answer that question for you.
We do, it all varies. Some, you know, typically you can park on both sides of the street if they are somewhat narrow and we post the side, we'll post the fire hydrant side. Um, we have a way of petitioning, um, no parking, that the residents can petition for no parking on one side or even both. Um, but we will also defer to police or fire, and there's been instances of that. Most recently, Camelot Drive, um, was always posted no parking on the fire hydrant side, but there's so many cars park on the one side that the fire deemed that they would have trouble, they were having trouble making runs. So we posted the other side at their request.
Yeah, there's some streets farther back from Camelot that just are, there's a lot of cars down.
If it, if.
How you get equipment, large equipment through there?
If it becomes an issue for fire, uh, uh, we, we will post, like I said, our, our policy is to post the fire hydrant side first, and if we have to post both sides, we will, but that's kind of more of a rare instance.
So Ben, in theory, is a road twenty, uh, twenty, how, how wide is it typical? Twenty-eight?
Twen, yes, it's twenty-eight. So if it's less, if it's less than, if it's less than twenty-eight, then we'll post one side. If it's your normal, average subdivision street that was built per the current standard, then typically parking's allowed on both sides.
Aaron, one other question. If you go back a couple, what is the recommendation on the drive-throughs?
So the recommendation is that they be permitted as a conditional use in the C-two zoning district, and then permitted with standards in the C-three and C-three-A and the SE. And those are the districts, those are the zoning districts that you typically see on Route Four.
So these would be regulated to Route Four?
Uh, or the C-two zoning district. So we have C-two peppered around the whole city, you know, like, um, South Gilmore is C-two. Um, there's some C-two down at Winton and Mac. Um, the, um, small, the John Gray Small Area, there's some C-two in there.
But that would be a conditional use of C-two. So the Planning Commission would have to review if somebody came in with a proposal, yes, on a case-by-case basis.
And I would assume, uh, drive-throughs that are there today would be grandfathered? That's how that works?
Everything existing would be grandfathered.
Which ones that are currently, do you know, would not be permitted now? Like if they, if they weren't currently there, would not longer, no longer be permitted?
Um, the D-one, we are no longer, um, right now, um, it's permitted use. Okay, so the D-one is the only zoning district that we are not recommending that, um, the drive-throughs be, um, located in. Yes, the Quick Cold. Yes, but that would be grandfathered in.
What, what?
What permanent drive-throughs, what, like, which minute was the one up on Happy Valley, the one over on Sims? Which ones that we currently have would no longer be in that permitted use?
Um, okay, so the, the Quick Cold in the downtown. The Minnix, I think, is C-two on Happy Valley. So that would, that, um, that would be a conditional use. And then the ones on Route Four would be permitted with standards, and the only standard that we have in there is about vehicle stacking. So it would be essentially permitted. I don't know of any other ones in the city, if anybody can help me.
Sims, by Domino's.
Uh, I think that's Zone C-three. So I think that would be okay.
Okay, cool. All right, thanks.
So this whole, on, everything on this slide is kind of the remainder of the items that I really wasn't gonna discuss tonight, but these are some of the changes that we are gonna be discussing. Um, these are at Planning Commission, these are more very minor things, like just making, clarifying some stuff and, um, just changing a few wordings, um, here and there. Um, so that brings us to this slide. Um, tonight's the joint public hearing. And then, um, next week, next Wednesday, is the Planning Commission meeting, is six o'clock, and, um, we will be discussing, like I said, all these items in detail. Sorry about the abridged version, but it's late evening for you all.
Any questions? Is anybody else up here? Planning Commission, appreciate your patience. Oh, you're gonna speak? Oh, okay. I thought you were.
I wasn't gonna shout questions from back there, so.
Okay.
Uh, Scott Lepsky, Planning Commission, just a couple of questions. Don't necessarily need answers tonight, but thought you might like to have a week to look into it and not maybe make any additions or changes that, uh, may be necessary. So, um, change to eleven thirty-one dot one-two, non-residential districts use specific standards. And I'm looking specifically at H, maximum height, si, uh, maximum size for primary structures. And I think maybe this was just a typo. I think the intention was to highlight in red, uh, item number two, primary structures in the M-one district are limited to a maximum of three-hundred squ, three-hundred thousand square feet gross floor area. I think that's, uh, what Ms. Lynn just presented. Uh, but also highlighted in red are primary structures in the C-one and C-two districts are limited to a maximum of five thousand square feet gross floor area, goes on to list a few bullet points, A through F. I believe that's already in the code.
That's highlighted red because they're being re, re, re-lettered. We have to highlight what's being changed. The lettering is being changed.
Thank you. Just, just wanted to make that, uh, make that clarification. And then, uh, let's. As, uh, was just mentioned with parking of commercial and construction vehicles. Certainly understand, uh, some of the, uh, some of the feedback that the, that the public is, uh, has, uh, come back with. Uh, one in particular at, uh, at an open house that, uh, that some, uh, some had to, uh, weather a storm with. But I have, uh, I have a question with regard to, uh, can, uh, it's number two, parking or storing of any construction vehicles, as was just, uh, just discussed. Uh, also says, uh, "Construction vehicles, machinery, devices and equipment shall include but not be limited to." And what caught my attention was scaffolding on here, uh, as we had had some brickwork done at the house a while ago. And I don't know that four hours is quite enough time for some of the residential work that, uh, that might be, uh, might be required. So I didn't know if that was a, uh.
No, I'm not sure if you mentioned, if you saw my, my slide, but it says, um, construction, um, construction, ongoing construction projects are exempt.
Yeah, is that, sorry, is that in here somewhere?
It's not in there, but it's been our, um, it's been, um, how we've treated projects like that. We've never, we've never considered a construction project to follow the four-hour rules. We always give them an exemption because it is under construction. The intention here was not to have somebody store these vehicles on there who live there and have no intentions of using them on that property on a regular basis.
Understood completely, and as we're doing this to, uh, to clarify a few, uh, few items, maybe that's something that we, uh, that we wanna put in there as well, just to make that clear.
To Mr. Lepsky's point, is there a, a time limit that active construction projects are, are classified within to where that would be something that we would need to make note of, or?
I can address that. So if somebody has an active building permit. Yeah. If, if someone has an active building permit, we know that, and they have, there's certain rules, and we are, uh, are, uh, uh, building officials back there. So if, if the project is ongoing, basically the permit stays ongoing, but if construction stops for an extended period of time, then the, the permit can be canceled. Where it gets tricky is if somebody's doing an active project with, you know, it doesn't necessarily require a permit. At that point, we, we generally watch it, and our zoning guys take pictures and they monitor it. And if, if they see work continually, continuing to go on, we say that's an active project. They can store the equipment while that's going on. But a lot of people say, yeah, I'm working on something, and then they just keep that stuff out there forever and ever, and you never see anything going on. This would, we think, give us a little more teeth, it would give a more teeth to our zoning officials, uh, zoning inspectors to have something to stand on. That's kind of the intention.
Now, a, a house that's been being built for four years, that, that we all know of by the water tower on Mac Road, is that, um, and, you know, a guy shaving his quarters and putting a window in at a time, or is that a, a brick? Uh, actually, today, somebody was there today.
Yeah, that was one where the, the owners, um, ran into some financial issues from what we, and then it becomes a, a question of, do we foreclose, or do we, do we?
Yeah.
You know, it, it, when they were staying in contact with us and, and trying to work through it, we thought it was the better course of action was to try to work with them. So I know that Lee, for instance, uh, required that they had their, um, insulation and, and weatherproofing re-examined, re-inspected.
Good.
Because if that's, was out exposed to the elements for an extended period of time. So he had some special inspections that were required in that circumstance. But it becomes an issue where you're, you start questioning, do we enforce, or do we continue to work with somebody? And you, you make the best decision you can and for as long as you can. And that one, I think they worked out their financial situations, and construction seems to be back on track a little bit.
They, that's garage doors and, uh.
Looks good.
Yeah, it's a nice house.
That's the four-year house. All right. Any other questions from anybody? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Planning Commission. All right. All right, uh, having any comments for approval of the minutes from the preceding meeting? Hearing none, we'll let them stand as read and presented. Um, full business, Development Services, Councilmember Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to amend various sections of Planning and Zoning Code of Ordinance Number one-six-six dash eight-four, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio. Uh, this will hold second reading pending Planning Commission recommendation, please.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, Councilmember Pessel.
Excuse me, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Mid-Ohio Golf Car Incorporated for the lease of golf carts at the Fairfield Greens Golf Course and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to remove this from the table.
Second. Motion second for remove the table, okay?
Hi.
Close, motion carried.
And we do have, uh, Assistant City Manager, sorry, I had to think of your title, I'm getting tired here, to go over some very quick specifics.
I'll be brief. I know Councilmember Davidson is looking forward to reading his next ordinance. So I will be brief. Um, after the last council meeting, we hadn't, we had an ordinance proposed to execute a three-year lease for new golf carts, um, at both of our golf courses. We took a deep dive into, um, that recommendation, looking at the possibility of converting our fleet into potentially a city-owned fleet and/or a, um, electric vehicle fleet, um, in accordance with some of the, uh, tenants of our Fairfield Sustains Plan. And so what I'll present here, I sent an email on Friday with a memo, um, outlining what we went through. But I'll, I'll walk through kind of a, a background of this situation and then what we believe is a, a recommended path forward for councils considering. and then what we believe is a, a recommended path forward for council's consideration. So as far as the, the history of our golf cart fleet at our two courses historically and, and exclusively, we have been a lease, uh, option. We have leased our golf carts. Uh, we have always used gas-powered golf carts. We have infrastructure in place to fuel tanks on-site. Um, why have we historically leased our facilities? Couple of reasons. We do not have cart barns, okay? We do not have storage for these carts. So we, we add a lot of wear and tear to these carts because they sit outside year-round, right? Golfer usage, our golfers, um, sometimes can be rough on our equipment, and so that needs to be taken into consideration. We do third-party maintenance of our fleet. We do not have an in-house mechanic that maintains our golf carts, so any maintenance items, we contract out to a third party. And then golfer expectations. When you come and, and play around a golf at one of our courses, you're going to expect to be able to, um, use a golf cart that is in good working order and good condition. So for those reasons, we have always gone with this lease model. That allows the city to turn its fleet over and get brand-new carts every three to four years. Uh, if we were interested in converting to an electric fleet, which some courses have done recently, uh, there would be some infrastructure considerations we'd have to be mindful of. Current golf carts, as I mentioned, were fueled from existing gas tanks on-site, an EV fleet, um, based on recommendations from the vendors. An electric golf cart fleet should be stored, um, and charged indoors undercover, okay? So we have two golf courses, we have two clubhouses. Unfortunately, the way this was set up, we would need two cart barns to store and charge a fleet of EV golf carts if we went this direction. Construction costs, this number might be a little bit inflated, but about seven hundred thousand dollars is what the infrastructure cost would be to construct two cart barns, including the extension of electric utilities into those facilities. Just the electric alone to get to these two facilities would, would cost about three hundred thousand dollars. It's a, you know, so it's a pretty significant lift.
Adam, is that inclusive of the actual charging for the golf carts, or just the logistics to get it there?
That's, I mean, that includes all of the plugs that you would have, and then each cart you would buy or lease would come with a charger that you would plug in, similar to this, uh, image here.
It's not the charging expense itself.
Correct, correct. Um, and so then we, we looked at cost comparison, own versus lease, gas and electric. So we, four comparisons. We had to make a few assumptions in this analysis and looking at costs for the electric or EV carts. We assumed the golf carts would last eight years. That's probably a stretch based on what we know. However, we, we looked at an eight-year, uh, life cycle for the electric golf carts because that is what the battery packs are warranted for, right? Um, for the gas golf carts, we are assuming three to five years, which is what we have typically seen from our, our current fleet. And then as far as new infrastructure costs, so seven hundred thousand dollars roughly to construct new, two new cart barns, we assign those assets to basically a thirty-year life expectancy. So to, to, to dumb it down, for me, if we spend three hundred thousand dollars on a, on a cart barn, um, and that, that cart barn is going to be an asset for thirty years, then the annual cost of that barn is ten thousand dollars per year. And that's what we did in terms of plugging it into this, uh, financial evaluation. Uh, you have all this information in the memo and in the couple of attachments that were included, but gas golf, gas carts leased, which is our, our current protocol and what we've done in the past, no new infrastructure requirements, limited capital outlay, uh, we would, we pay monthly or quarterly for these leased carts. We do secure new carts every three to four years, uh, at an annual cost of just over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, roughly. If we went in the direction of purchasing our fleet of golf carts, we could also do this. If it was gas, still no new infrastructure, there would be a significant capital outlay for the carts, and I think year one would be just about six hundred thousand dollars to buy a hundred carts outright. Uh, we plugged into this scenario that those carts would last five years, and we made that assumption because, again, we don't have it, we don't have a cart barn, so even if we're buying these carts, they're sitting outside year-round. So, you know, five years was about as far, as far as we thought we could push that asset. Um, with that being said, possibility of additional maintenance costs associated with owning this fleet in those out-years, annual cost, not much different than the leased option at a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year. And again, that, that assumes in this eight-year window, this evaluation window, that we would purchase a new fleet after year five.
And your golfer experience is better in a three-year cart that, versus a five-year cart?
Yes, yes.
That includes resale of the purchased carts as well?
That, that assumes almost, that assumes zero value of resale after that five years. I, is there some residual value of that fleet? Yes, but it's going to be minimal, is, is what we found. So looking at the electric options, um, the lease option and then purchase, so we looked at, um, Councilmember, uh, Myers had mentioned, you know, with his job, you know, there was an option to do a, a, a four-year lease and then, uh, basically a lease-to-own option. We looked at that same option here. This obviously would require the new infrastructure because we would have to store and charge these, um, golf carts. The lease option is, would be appealing because it would be limited capital outlay, right? So you're leasing, you're paying monthly or quarterly for the fleet. As I mentioned, because we are looking at this as an eight-year life cycle for these EV carts, based on their warranty, uh, that might be an unrealistic expectation. That might be a little bit longer of a lifespan than what we could real, realistically get based on what we've seen historically, right? Um, some benefits, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, reduce energy use, um, I would say improve the golfer experience. If you get an electric golf cart, they're usually quieter, they're, uh, maybe a little bit smoother. However, it comes with a cost, and the lease and then purchase option is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. Again, this, these are annual costs. And then the EV cart ownership option, um, similar in terms of lease, obviously new infrastructure, you'd have a substantial capital outlay if we wanted to purchase one hundred EV golf carts. Conservatively, we're talking one point one million dollars, so a pretty significant lift in terms of our, uh, you know, out-of-pocket expenditure. Same considerations with the, the life expectancy of that fleet, uh, same potential benefits, obviously, as, um, the lease option. So some other things to keep in mind when we are talking about potential significant capital projects or competing interests in golf. So right now, we have four fairly significant capital obligations or expectations, uh, two of which are in our capital improvement program and two of which are, are being discussed currently. So we've got, uh, in our 2027 CIP, we do have budget, budgeted for a five hundred thousand dollar, um, facility, maintenance facility and, and storage facility for all of the equipment at, uh, South Trace. We have in our 2028 CIP budget, a million and a half dollars earmarked for basically a complete replacement of our irrigation systems at South Trace, which those irrigation systems are, uh, essentially original to the course. And then we also have some interest in making significant course improvements at North Trace. And, uh, the photo that you have here is from an engineering study that Public Works helped, uh, put together, looking at what we need to do in terms of restoring and maintaining the, the seven ponds that we have on our course, and this is the largest one. And if you play this course, you know, we have some retaining wall failures, we have some structural concerns with some of our water features that we're going to need to address at some point. So we do have some competing capital, um, interests.
I think a lot of my golf balls are holding that wall up, so...
Mine are in the water.
That's what I mean, they're in the water, holding that wall up.
Um, so based on operational needs, based on infrastructure limitations, costs, uh, competing capital obligations, as just mentioned, and then the fact that our current lease term expires very soon, staff is recommending, um, what we had presented a couple of weeks ago. We are, we are, um, recommending a three-year lease agreement with an optional extension year or two, gas-powered golf carts. And then, over the course of that term, staff would continue to evaluate the feasibility of migrating to an EV fleet, um, looking at, in accordance with Fairfield Sustains, looking at environmental benefit, looking at economic, uh, and return on investment considerations, as well as, as quality of life. And if we're able to make the justification based on those three, um, pillars, then we would work to incorporate any necessary infrastructure into the capital plan. Um, that photo, I was asked to put that photo in.
If I put that in my barn, will the mice leave?
That's first place. I don't know who the guy on the left is, um, but...
Just gotta ignore the fact that the golf pro was on our team.
He was the last-minute ad.
My question is, if I put that in my barn, will the mice run?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, that's what I have, guys. If there are, are questions, certainly, I, I'll do my best answer.
Thank you.
I've got a question. How many of your shots were used in that?
Zero. And that is true.
Uh, I just, uh, golfed out at Belterra, so if, if in three years I won't be here, but I know if you're considering this, um, they are electric, but they couldn't put the golf cart barns... Is that a storm? They couldn't...
Air in here?
Oh, it's a mirror. See, golf cart barns are further away than the nice, pretty clubhouse and everything? So they can't store golf carts, they have to go inside, so now their labor at night is about double because they're running every night to rent a golf cart and two people and back and forth, and they're hooking them together. So, uh, you're, it was interesting, they said if, if the golf cart barn was right there in front, which they wouldn't put right in front of the clubhouse, uh, their labor rate was intense. He said it takes us double or triple the time at night to put them all away, put them to bed, basically, you know, and put them inside, plug them in, et cetera. It's kind of interesting. Just a week ago, I did that. Anyway, good presentation.
Thank you, Adam, very much.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
So, where, where...
Uh, yes.
I move to adopt.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Public Utilities, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to amend subsection nine-two-one dot oh four, subsection A, license bonding requirements, subsection one-two-nine-two-one dot oh five F, inspection of meters, subsection nine-two-one dot oh six A, special meters, subsection nine-two-one dot oh seven A, application for water services fee, subsection nine-two-one dot oh eight, water rates, subsection nine-two-one dot one-two B, cross-connection control, water quality backflow protection, and subsection nine-two-five dot oh eight B, one sewer uses, user rate of ordinance number one-six-six dash eight for the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio. And that is the third and final time I have to read that, and I move to adopt.
Motion second, all in favor? Oppose, motion carried. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to read all the business by time.
Thank you. Motion second, all in favor? Oppose, motion carried. All right, Community and Public Relations, Mr. Timmer.
We have three simple motions tonight for Community and Public Relations. Thank you.
All right. That's pretty simple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a simple motion to approve the December twenty-twenty-five meeting schedule for city council meetings to meet only the second Monday of December with no meeting held on the fourth Monday of the month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
Bless you.
That was the second?
The, uh, second simple motion is to reappoint Ben Mann and Don Hasford to the Butler County Transportation Improvement District effective November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five and expir, expiring November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
And last simple motion is to approve the following twenty-twenty-five boards and commission appointments effective October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. John Kincaid, Civil Service Commission, to fill a partial term that expires three-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Good pick. He's a great guy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Development Services, Mr. Timmer.
We have two ordinances tonight for Development Services. The first ordinance is to affirm the designation of the Fairfield CIC and authorize a grant of funds to be made to the CIC for public purposes. The Fairfield CIC has requested a grant from the city to allow the organization to complete project implementation. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute and submit the FY twenty-twenty-six Community Development Block Grant Application and Agreement with Butler County. A sidewalk is proposed on the east side of Dixie Highway between Michael Lane and Holden Boulevard. The purpose of this sidewalk is to provide a safe walking route for pedestrians who live, work, or attend school in the area and travel this section of roadway. Thank you.
All right. Development Services, Mr. Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation, a Fairfield SEC's agency for development in the city, and authorizing a grant of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Fairfield for public purposes and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Did we hear a second?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't hear him, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
And motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
I also have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute and submit the FY two thousand twenty-six Community Development Block Grant CD BG Application and Agreement with Butler County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second, rule for suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Moving right along now. So, Public Works, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Public Works. The ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute and file an application for financial assistance and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the OPWC Issue One Grant Applications for Program Year Forty. It is necessary for city council to authorize the manager to execute multiple grant applications with OPWC for financial assistance for the twenty-twenty-seven Street Improvement Program, including asphalt and concrete contracts. If approved, OPWC District Ten would be funding approximately one million for this project. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have one ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute and file the application for financial assistance and enter into an agreement with Ohio Public Works Commission for the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC Issue One Grant Application for Program Year Forty and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second, for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Thank you. All right, Public Safety, Mr. Timmer.
We have one simple motion tonight for public safety. Thank you.
Councilmember Paulus.
I have a motion to not request a hearing regarding a liquor application in the name of Kuschu at six-seven-seven-five Dixie Highway Unit A, Fairfield, Ohio, Class D1, D2.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. I would like to comment, if you've not been there, this is a great place to eat. I, I, I'm the furthest from that palate on my mouth, but I've had a great time, and the people I take there, I can't believe they're in Fairfield, so it's a great place. All right. Um, Finance and Budget, Mr. Timmer.
We have two ordinances tonight for Finance and Budget. The two ordinances are for appropriations. The contractual appropriations total four hundred and twenty-five thousand and include one project, a funding grant to the Fairfield CIC. The non-contractual appropriations total one hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and include eight projects in the Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and Public Utilities Departments. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you. I've got a couple of items here. The first one is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one fifty-eight dash twenty-four, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for expenses and other expenditures for City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. These are the contractual appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
The, uh, second item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one fifty-eight dash twenty-four, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenditures, expenses and expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five", this is a non-contractual appropriation. This time I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from council, comes from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried.
That's all I have.
Madam Clerk, meeting scheduled.
Monday, October twenty-seventh, Council Manager briefing, five-thirty P.M., regular meeting, seven P.M. Monday, November tenth, Council Manager briefing, five-thirty P.M., regular meeting, seven P.M. Monday, November twenty-fourth, Council Manager briefing, six P.M., regular meeting, seven P.M.
All right, no executive session, so we are adjourned.